It's been an awesome, awesome experience and I'm so very blessed to move Fairfield in the right direction. I know that the voters know that youth and crime is the main focus of Fairfield and that is why I am elected. And I think that we gotta keep on going in the right direction.
He was always looking forward, not backwards. And he was inspiring as a young man. I mean, as a young man, the fact that he did what he did, you know, to run against incumbents and win. That says a lot about his appeal to the people in Fairfield. I remember my neighbor who used to live next to me, one day she came over there, she said, "Who's this young guy? Matt Garcia running for city council?" And I go, "Well," and I told her about it. She goes, "You know, I met him at a coffee shop." She goes, "I like that young guy." I said, "Yeah, you gonna vote for him?" She goes, "Oh yeah, we're all voting for him."
He was a person who had such a presence, not only physically, but just emotionally and verbally. Whenever he spoke, he was so articulate. When he walked into the room, you could already tell that he was a person who was interested in you out of everybody else in the crowd.
He loved to show up. He wanted to be the best of the best, always. When it came down to teaching him how to play baseball, he wanted to be Jose Casaco.
Matt was amazing. He was super active and probably had, we had him diagnosed, they probably would've said he had ADHD. He couldn't sit still, but that's what kept him going and that's how he was able to do so many things in his life. He was, he just had this heart of gold. He was loving and cared about people and how they felt. And he had that sense. He was just a little, a little guy.
Started back in 2007. Both Matt and I were running for a seat on the city council. I'd never met him, I didn't know him, he didn't know me. If I remember correctly, there were probably seven or eight people running for council. And what happened was that Matt, we're knocking on doors. Matt didn't knock on doors, Matt would stand up in front of coffee shops. And I knew that Matt was somebody to be reckoned with when my wife came home one day and said, "Honey, of course you don't want to vote for you, but I met this kid." And that's what he was referred to as the kid. And so I figured, you know what, I probably need to find out who this kid is.
Matt was, I think he was about 11. I think he was in sixth grade when he said, "I'm gonna be the mayor of Fairfield one day." And we're like, "Okay, Matt, you know, why do you want to be the mayor? What's that about?" And he understood the direction that the city was going in and that there was so much crime and young people getting into gangs and things like that. And Matt saw both sides of life and what direction you could choose to take. And so he wanted to make it possible for young people to do whatever they wanted to do and be whoever they wanted to be.
Well, Matt was elected to the Fairfield City Council. And at his first meeting, I was appointed as city manager. So we started out as rookies together. And we had a very close relationship. Also, Matt worked four doors down from my wife. And so they had an office building, so they got to know each other. And we just had, just really connected on a personal, both a personal level and professional level. And so did my wife with him. So he was like family to us.
Everybody knew Matt Garcia, it seemed like. And the reason for that was because Matt wasn't shy in speaking to anyone. You know, if anybody had any questions or concerns, he was there to address them.
Matt was able to tap into something that I think a lot of politicians wish they could. And it's this authentic need that people feel to want to be a part of something. To believe you, you know, when you're saying something, to know that you honestly believe it. And Matt was able to do that, not just for young people, especially for young people, but also for the whole community. He has an incredible way about him, that he was, you were drawn to him.
When you live in a city that has 105,000 people and you don't have a bowling alley, a skating rink, a boys' and girls' club, a police athletic league, which we just approved, that's harmful. That's why we have so much crime in this city. These kids don't have anything to do.
That night, Labor Day night, I got a call about 8:30 that night on our landline. And nobody usually called that phone. And it was my friend Terry. And it was, I felt weird. Why is she calling on the landline? And she said, "Hey Teresa, have you talked to Matt?" And I said, "Yeah, I was with him earlier today. What's going on?" And she said, "I think he just got shot." I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And she said, "Yeah, I think he just got shot." So I hung up and I kept calling his phone and he didn't answer. So I called the non-emergency police line and they transferred me to the sergeant's desk, which hung up and I had to call back. And they said, "They're sending an officer to pick us up," but they wouldn't tell me what happened. So I'm screaming for my husband and the girls and I'm running up and down the stairs. And we get, the officer finally gets there and they take us to John Mearm and there was so much traffic. And I remember asking the officer, "Do you know what happened?" And he said, "Ma'am, alls I know is he was shot in the head." And that was the first mention of what had happened to him.
He was my angel and it was hard for me to accept that he didn't come home that night. The fact I had to move, I had to sell my house because there were so many memories of him. He was just a beautiful, a beautiful spirit. I'll miss him till the day I die.
I think for a little while, I thought that all hope was gone. He had brought such hope and such a spirit about him that made us old folks think that we can do something again, that we can believe in the system, that we can believe in people who run our communities, who work in our communities, who lead in our communities. And then for him to have been taken away from us made that hope kind of disappear for a little while.
It was devastating. It was a tragedy. It kind of woke me up. I was going through life, kind of just going through the motions. And Matt wasn't that kind of guy. He didn't just go through emotions, you know? He went out and inspired people to do better and do the best they could. So he kind of woke me up, wanted me to be better, inspired me to do better. I kind of proceeded with that after his death and tried to live the life that he'd want to live or for me to live. Worked hard, blessed enough to now work for the city of Fairfield Fire Department as a firefighter paramedic.
It makes you think, like, what do we do now? You know what I mean? Because how can someone with so much potential, like, be gone just like that, you know? And it's not just him, it's what he did for the city in his time here. It was just, you know, something that I couldn't believe. But, you know, you want to take the next steps to help do what, you know, he did or pick up where he left off.
After they told us that Matt wasn't gonna survive this, the donor network came in. And I knew Matt was a donor and he was proud to be a donor and he was also O negative blood, so he gave blood all the time. And he always wanted to help people. And so I knew this was really, really important. And that as hard as it was gonna be, it was necessary. And I'm just so grateful that we were able to move forward with that. And Matt's lungs went to a woman, Jenny, who I ended up getting to meet. And she's a beautiful, beautiful person. And then another young man, a 26-year-old man, Keith, he received one of Matt's kidneys. And his grandmother had petition, she sent a letter to the mayor asking if we would consider giving her grandson, who had a disease, one of Matt's kidneys. Absolutely. And then I've met another one of, on Facebook, Dawn, he also received one of Matt's kidneys. But the one that sticks out to me the most is the letter from Jenny, who received Matt's lungs. And she talked about how she's Buddhist and that when she goes to meditate, her and Matt breathe together. And that just was so amazing to me. And I felt like I had a connection with her instantly.
I was asked by his family, by Teresa entering the vote, if I would consider, you know, going for the appointment for Matt's seat. Very hard decision, of course, in one way, but then an easy decision in another way. Because I always believed in what Matt, what his ideals were, what he wanted. We talked many times when he was a student and when he was a candidate. So I was very proud to take over that seat and I'm still proud to this day to be in that seat.
I remember going to Raymond Teresa's house and talking to them, kind of just saying, "Hey, this, we just need to spin this into something positive." And I remember going to their house that first night and it just kind of clicked, you know? They had already been, had those same feelings and we, it just happened just so quickly. We kind of put a plan together and figured out who we wanted to help us with this effort. Reached out to some community members and it just went by self-blast. Here we are 10 years later, still pushing, still doing what we can to help the community, help the youth.
We are here to serve our community. Hence, as Matt was developing himself and maturing himself and understanding really the territory, what he'd been called to lead and to be a part of is, hence came to that, if we would support youth, we wouldn't have to be doing a lot of this restorative reconciling and rehabilitating. If we would support youth, it would help stop the crimes and would ultimately strengthen the very communities that we live in. Hence, the spiritual gift of service. So we believe we're here to serve. And so that's just a natural perpetuation of really who Matt was.
I'm a big time youth and community guy myself. Like I said, currently I'm president of the baseball league here. And we serve, you know, teenagers, 13 to basically 19. And for me, it's more than just baseball. We have an opportunity to affect these young men with women chose to play in our league. But we have an opportunity to make the connection and, you know, talk about these things more than so just baseball, but bringing these guys are gonna be our future, you know, leaders of our community.
I do a program called Bring Your A Game. And we go to the high schools. I've gotten together with entrepreneurs that have always been in this town. I've been in this town for 57 years. And I believe education is so important. That's why we got a program called Bring Your A Game. And Bring Your A Game is what it does is we go to high schools and with these entrepreneurs, we let these children know how important education is. Because I believe that school teaches you skills, but education teaches you how to use the skills. And there's a lot of, there's a treasure inside each child and the child needs to know that there's treasure. There's, you can not only work for somebody, but you can own your own businesses. So we go around, we encourage these kids and we show them how to do it. You know, I don't have my own business, but to be able to connect with all these men that have their own businesses, we're able to go to schools and give them hope of not just working for somebody, but owning their own businesses. And it's working pretty good. So to be able to connect that with Matt's dream of Bring Your A Game is just phenomenal that 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 could be. Because I don't know, I could throw this in right now. Matt was shot on my birthday, you know, and I know there's a connection somewhere in that, you know? So I'm gonna keep his dream alive, you know? So that's what we're doing and that's what we're gonna keep on doing because Salona needs to know that we do care. And we're gonna help everybody, no matter who they are, bring their A game.
We're all here to make a difference in our community. It doesn't matter your age, your gender, anything. We're all here to make a difference. And just imagine if we all came together and did something to support our community, it would be so much more of a positive place. And together, we can make it a positive place.
When I first went to clean up, you know, I didn't know where I was going. I thought I was just going to another volunteer event. No. When I went there, I was, I had such a connection with everyone, if that makes sense? Like, I was included as like, I knew them for years. This love that they had gave me and, you know, the respect and like, you know, just the appreciation, you know, that I was there. You know, in a sense, it doesn't mean a lot to go on a Saturday morning to go pick up trash, but it does mean a lot. Because it's not only about picking up trash and cleaning our community, it's doing that with our family and helping our community.
There's a contest on how much trash people can pick up and the kids just seem to love it. And I think it's a great way to bring my son up around fellow people who want to be of service to each other and create relationships with each other that are hopefully lasting and to learn to be of service to the community.
Something that Matt used to do during his free time was walk along the streets of downtown Fairfield and pick up any piece of trash that he saw. And it's something so simple as that, that can truly make your community look like a more positive place. And I do that during the Matt Garcia Foundation's monthly cleanups. I honestly, I enjoy going to downtown Fairfield and cleaning up trash. It feels, it's like a relief when you see a pile of trash and then you pick it up and it's gone. It's, it just makes your community look like a better place.
There's a lot of positive things that go on in Fairfield. It's unbelievable. There's so many people here who are involved in making the community a wonderful place to be.
We've been able to help so many people because of the support from the community. And even outside the community, we've been able to give so many thousands and thousands of dollars in scholarships and help so many young people. And now we have so many young people on our board and our advisory board. And they're the ones who are gonna take the reins and make the difference.
I try to do, I stay involved, you know, I do the things that I know that he would want to do. I advocate for the youth. And I try to get involved in the city of Fairfield. Right now, next week, I have an interview for one of the commissions. And then also, I try to help with the fundraising for his fundraisers that he has. And then I do my best to get out there to help with the cleanup. But just to keep the dream alive, I always advocate for the youth to try to keep them out of trouble.
So I retired four years ago as city manager of Fairfield. I'm still volunteering in the community. Why am I volunteering in this community? Part of it is because of Matt. Part of it is because I saw what his enthusiasm and what his dream was and his desire, and I bought it. And so I'm currently president of the Fairfield Community Services Foundation. We serve two segments of the population that were dear to Matt. We serve the youth and we serve seniors.
Matt's three main things were to stop crime or help stop crime, strengthen the community, and most of all, support youth. So everything we do at the foundation supports one of those three categories. And it makes me feel a lot better to know that I'm doing something Matt would want me to do. I never in my life would have thought about volunteering until after Matt died. And then I realized it was up to us to pick up that torch and start doing the things that Matt would have wanted us to do.
We're not gonna get Matt back. We understand the finality of his physical existence not being here. How can we eliminate that possibility of someone else being able to get an illegal firearm through an illegal sale? This gun was sold at the garage sale. And so we learned that there was ways to create environments for people to help bring and get rid of unwanted guns. And so what we did, we partnered with our district attorneys and all the police chiefs in Salona County. And we established a gun buyback. And we shared, had they been in an environment where if someone could actually have brought their this gun to a place where he could properly dispose of an unwanted gun, maybe Matt wouldn't be absent from us at this moment in time.
We've had two successful gun buyback events. And not that we're against guns, but being able to allow those people who wanted to get rid of their guns, have a safe place to do that. And we're able to get gift cards to pour the guns was huge.
The Bell of Peace and Purpose that was erected and placed at the Matt Garcia Career and College Academy. In the history of the Bell of Peace and Purpose was the evolution of buying these firearms off the street and wanting to create, use them for a greater purpose. And so the Bell of Peace and Purpose is representative of the almost 700 firearms that we've helped properly dispose legally off the streets. The weight of that and the direction of that. So the Glassaw family helped us erect this Bell of Peace and Purpose. And so essentially just four pillars that's on this base with this bell that's inside of this, with this emblem of the Matt Garcia Career and College Academy. And their message was, "Reach for the stars," which is consistent to Matt's message. He said, "Every day we should take life as a test. We should shoot for a better score each day. It doesn't have to be an A, but let's hope that it improves." So just encouraging people to continue to do the right thing for the right reason. So we unveiled that, working with the district attorney and the committee leaders here at the Matt Garcia Career and College Academy. So we've done actually a second unveiling of that with this star and with this refreshness and with another artist, Zachary Young, who's just a phenomenal artist, young leader. He actually painted a mural to represent our community. And the message is about the gift that we have as Americans to work hard. We have freedom to work hard into our community and to be a better person in this world that we live in. So we unveiled that for the second time here in April. So the bell's message is representative of really universal of values and principles. And so I'll go over those quickly. So the bell's dome represents the vault of heaven. And the circular bottom represents the horizon of the earth. The clapper inside of this bell represents the voice and the tongue of divinity. The empty space that's within the bell represents all that's contained between heaven and earth. When the clapper hits the inside of the bell, it symbolizes the voice of divinity.
I started here back in September of last year, working in the food service with Rachel. And it's just been really great. I mean, I love the environment.
Students are proud to be a part of a school that's small. A school where every staff member knows their name. A school where students are able to have experiences that are beyond the norm at a comprehensive school. We're able to take the kids on field trips to different colleges and locations. We have a wonderful hospitality program, which is also gonna put our kids out in the community. And they leave here better prepared for life beyond school.
The Learning Center was a school for at-risk students. And we've evolved since then to a career and college academy model, where we're now preparing students for college and career pathways.
They support us in so many ways. You explain, if you explain to them what you want to do in life and where you want to go, the staff will support you in what you're doing. More of a family here. They want you to go on to these great careers and go to college and everything. They want you to succeed in life.
What we're trying to do here is to really honor Matt Garcia. I tell my students to, I know, honor their, honor Matt Garcia through their behavior, through their attitude, through everything that they do, and but also honoring their families. Because really, that's what you're doing. You're honoring yourself and being that shining light and persevering through everything.
The teachers and all the staff here have definitely helped students raise grades and definitely helped encourage volunteering in the community.
The Matt Garcia Foundation was instrumental in seeing to it that we had a garden that we could build and use on our site. We called it the Matt Garcia Hope Garden. And they kept that garden going for us.
When I was looking for a teaching job three summers ago, I applied at 35 different schools locally, anything within an hour drive. And this is the one I really wanted. And it was like a long, arduous road to get here, but I'm very happy that I got here. And I love teaching at Matt Garcia. It's just such a good family environment with the staff and the students.
Honestly, I wish I would've found this school sooner. My cousin's coming here and I'm so glad I got her in. I'm so glad that I'm able to just give her the chance that I got. But sooner, if I would've known about this school, sooner I would've been here and still would've felt the same way. If not, you'd love to do it more.
I chose to come to Matt Garcia because I was told by my sister that I already came here, that it was a great school and how kids were getting way better grades and how kids are just excelling in this school.
I know I have people to support me and that's the number one key, I think, is, you know, just to know that you have people just supporting you and that you actually have help. You're not alone.
We have students, because we're so small, we have students completely involved in every aspect of our school. They're involved in activities, they're involved in setup of anything, cleanup of anything. They serve on different, at every kind of community event we do, they serve on those. They also, they helped with graduation. The students are a big part of everything. And that in itself really embodies that idea of keeping them engaged in something positive. And then on top of that, we have the internships and other ways that we can get students doing productive things in our community.
One of the reasons I was coming here, especially the career side of the house, we really get the students involved in the work ethic while they're in high school. And I don't know how you can beat that. They go off on these internships and get to work at different businesses and really see what it's like. Because I know a lot of times when I'm teaching the seventh graders, I'm talking, "Well, this is what you're gonna face and that's what you're gonna face." And they're like, "Oh yeah, right." Where when they get into high school and they get involved in those internship programs, that really gets them prepared.
My hope always is, every year, that the next Matt Garcia is part of the crop of students that are coming to our school. The next young leader for our city and for our community is here. And hopefully, we can develop some young man or young woman to continue his legacy in government and make Fairfield a city better for all.
Recently, I've been asking myself, you know, what good have I done? Like, are you satisfied? If you leave here, you know, leave this world today, are you satisfied with the work you've done?
Find somebody positive in your life, follow their footsteps, you know? There's not always someone like that in your life per se, but if you can emulate someone as Matt, Matt did, or as Matt does or did when he was a kid, just keep pushing forward, you know? You're gonna come across hardships in life and you're gonna come across negative things and negative people. And just strive to do your best, you know? Just strive to be a better person.
You can do anything you want in this world. You're only limited by yourself. And just keep moving forward and do whatever you want to do. And I think, I think that Matt, for sure Matt had that, that dream.
I think he set up the base and the way and the path for the, his generation at least. Because human beings have to keep dreaming. You can't stop dreaming. Because if you stop dreaming, dreaming, you die.
Do the right thing, you know, whatever it takes. People aren't dumb. They know what's wrong or right. You know, if people are gonna make mistakes, kids are gonna do bad things. You know, if you make a mistake, there's a beauty in a mistake. And that's a lesson that's learned. And as long as you can learn, take the lesson out of the mistake, you're gonna be okay.
Value people, value yourself, value people. Believe in people, believe in yourself. Love people unconditionally and love yourself unconditionally. And we authenticate that we're enough, you're enough for God, just in fact, who you are. And we authenticate that by the very breath that you and I breathe right now.
If you have a dream, shoot for the stars and go for it. Because I'm a witness of somebody that came from nothing and built his way up to something with just a dream.
Anybody, anybody you can get a chance, help somebody bring their A game. And like I said, again, that was Matt's motto. And like I said, again, that was Matt's motto, "Bring your A-Game." And that means that your A-Game, not somebody else's A-Game, your A-Game. If you can help somebody bring the best out of them, like I said again, there's a treasure inside each person. And if we can help them bring that treasure out and know that it was already in them, we just help them with it. And help them bring their A-Game, I think that we'll all get together and connect and be able to help our city the way it needs to be helped.
To all of you out there that are like Matt Garcia, remember that we need that breath of fresh air from young people. So please, follow his example and get onto the council and let's do some great things.
We need the voice of you who think Fairfield to help us determine the direction that we're going to go. So upon his own, Matt went to the high schools, talked to the principals, and then he went into the classrooms to talk about what public service really means and how you can make a difference, even though you're just one voice. And today, I look at our youth commission and I see Eric Cortez and a host of others who have made such a great difference. And I know, in my heart of hearts, I know that Matt is looking down. Very pleased with all these bright young people who are choosing to make a difference in their community.